Welcome everyone and thanks for coming. As usual, first thing on the agenda is public comment and I have listed here Cynthia and Jeff Lee. Would you like to come up and state your number and address please?
Hello, I forgot it. My name is Cynthia. This is my husband Jeff. We live in Montana, Penn Road. To your request, hopefully three different signs indicating local traffic, delivery only. We bought the house in nineteen eighty-eight and over the last several years, the truck, the tractor, trailer traffic has become a particular. I mean, it's like, it's a raceway out there. Now factor in the tractor trailers. And we believe this is happening because of GPS and sending them over from six twenty-five to about ten as a shortcut. It's become a quality of life issue and in our opinion, the noise level is ridiculous. And not only that, it's a safe, it's now become a safety feature. We have a lot of people, we've walked that road over the. It's here. I mean, if any of you are familiar with Mount Penn Road, it's very windy, it's very narrow road. It does not make the house. Period of the story. There was one truck in particular, and I don't know if the department can help us out. They could bring there every night between three fifty and five o'clock. It takes three sixty-five truck. And he comes down and through them. You don't know where he goes. You actually thought about following him, see where he goes. Maybe he won't, okay. Yeah, I mean, he says a lot of times, anywhere between three fifty and five o'clock. And it's real just because I said a quality of life and things. So we're going to leave these folks. The health is valued, the law is signs. I know when I talked about people, you know, who was trying to help our listeners. It can grant little signs work, we don't know, but if you don't try.
I just thought you should come to the meeting. First of all, I thought you should come to the meeting with manager. Just because it says no trucking means go over the zone. The problem is during trucking, I will say, choose the local. And all other chiefs speak to how hard it is to do that. How hard manage expectation would that actually hit with the current.
That was just.
Well, I didn't. There was a red tractor bridge on the young road on the. What I'm wondering is, is that even. That has no weight limit whatsoever. Yeah, so any, any truck that we want, state road, we just. I mean, I'm wondering, any road that, any road in the state that is leading to the highway road. We want to bring them to the road and Mount Penn Road at the time. Even a visiting three one, big tractor road.
In the state back in two thousand eighteen, and actually the block thirty-one, which actually allows trucks that are normally eight foot wide. Now they're allowing eight foot six inches to increase that with one state road as well as local. Local authorities still have the right to perform the study to restrict those type of trucks. Like they, they know where to be enforcement, uh, be forced by the police department. My opinion is they need to have studies like that in case they go to court. There's eventual study on to that.
They increase the width of the truck, but not the width of the roads. So what's that?
I understand what you're saying. That's where, that's where a study should be done, where they measure the width of the road. Site distance with the vertical horizontal site of distance as well as where your driver is. Because when you have a truck fifty-three feet, you're right, maneuvering along a windy road without that road online, which is quite challenging. And the positive to that.
Well, not only that, here's some damage already. There's a truck here over. And they did that. He had a truck that he knew about. That was driving through. Take up truck, uh, came down, he went here. He didn't know that all, yeah, in order to sum it all down, nothing was trying to do it, but same. There's not that much route to the left and to the right.
There's some restrictions you do with, there's restrictions where you limit the size of the truck. Just the, after what Bob said, unfortunately, when it comes to school buses and delivery trucks, they have to allow them. And then you're right, GPS does take a lot of trucks on roads that may more would take, but it's the least path. Or should they want roads that may not necessarily suitable for truck traffic, but where enforcement and so forth. You put a sign up and then it gets challenged. She corrected me if I'm wrong. If you go to a district justice, they're gonna wanna see a study. We must support that. It could be done by the police department, it could be done by the, our department. They would look into the road. There's criteria that Pendo sets forth in publication two twelve that you can follow in order to do a study. You look at geometric, you look at the site distance, you also look at the accident record. Our way with and so forth. And, and also vehicle classification, how many trucks are driving and so forth. That's all factors that look into the study to determine whether or not we can prohibit truck traffic and so forth.
We can only study the home roads. Then without looking at the study on the.
That is correct. If it's a state road, then study would have to be. One thing with shape break is, uh, Pendo, uh, constraining them unless the crater of the road is very flat. They have criteria for shape break. It's a safe issue for three point. And I, I've encountered this in other municipalities. Pendo will be able to resist and prohibit any shape breaks. Usually it's areas where it's great supply. In a populated area, but where there is deepest and they're safe to disturb, it's that shape break. For stopping, so the department will regulate that and not, however, from my experience, they're a little bit, I'll say. Very more conservative when it comes to prohibiting. And that would be a factor of looking at truck studies and so forth, stopping distance. All those are factors in, in looking at it, which probably weight restriction is a little more of a, a different type of study where you're looking at. On the structure of the pavement, you're looking at the road, you're looking at the fine line of the road is. Trucks can be made on a road versus restricted. But in the shared trucks, we need to do the whole geometric configuration. That's something that there's other factors that would be looked into. And evaluate that information for the side. Yes, you, yes.
You, you can, but I, I wouldn't recommend that. We don't have really sources to do that. What we can do now is provide Joe or whoever can do that study with the crash data and traffic data. And the amount of vehicles that, that fall on that road at any point in time. But as far as geometric measuring, when I can't even say the words that you're saying, we can't do that.
Yes, it hasn't something our office can perform. We've done other studies in the past where the township, the area were, were organized. A study where we also limited the size of the truck where in some areas maybe put it ten thousand pounds, which by parts. Other factors that we, that, that just she said, we'll, we'll look at people in the grade of the road. Dimensions and, and repair the police assistance and speed data as well as accident records that can all be implemented in that study. Uh, I mean, there's criteria that. Car restriction. Yeah. I, I don't know if Bob's on hand, but I can provide one through the township. Once I get a chance to look at the road, it's basically a decision upon how, how long of a road we're looking at. Shouldn't be both too expensive, but if I get a better idea, if we're looking at Mount Penn Road and take a look at the road itself and its size. And be able to provide a, a cost.
In, in a perfect world, yeah. It's, it's, these kind of, these kind of signs, incidents. Restrictions that are put in place are very difficult to enforce. I, I will say that history has shown, I'm not saying this is the case, but a lot of the, the, uh, when the plane comes in for truck traffic. Or excessive speed. Sometimes it's very difficult to determine how fast to be able to really ignore, especially when you're in a situation there and not, not move. Everybody here wants, and again, I'm not saying that's not the case. There are a lot of roads, in every road, in every township, borough, and city. Speeds. People are driving the van. That being said, that, you know, walking signs will happen, signs will happen, calls will come in. And just by virtue of twenty-two square miles in the township, a number of us are in the street. We're not going to be able to use these calls. So that's what we're looking at. As Bob indicated as well, it's going to be up to ultimately the district justice to determine whether or not these trucks. Are local, if they're authorized to be on the road. As Joe and Bob have pointed out, any kind of stuff they truck, fuel truck, Amazon delivery, any kind of delivery. That's, yes, they're authorized to deal with that, trash truck, school truck, you know. And, uh, yeah, I think they live there. So. It's not up to us to determine you want or you have to go. So it, it, it's a challenge for us to avoid it, but if that's what, you know, occurs, then you are best to. When we're off, we respond now and deal with it. Thank you. I mean, if that's what we're looking at, and say, for example, studies doesn't really justify, you're going to be enforcement of restrictions. It might be a good idea to talk about putting something up in place to alert trust. That maybe don't know prior to going on to that road, you know, GPS stating that. So they don't get the situation, but they don't back out of the road for it. That's dangerous. You know, to try and maybe prevent something like that from occurring before it occurs, that might be about options. Did you use these studies about the. A lot of times really the challenge is both.
Our study would be looking at the safety aspect of the road while we're out there doing evaluation. We can look at supplemental signage that might be against safety, uh, their visibility providers and using. Implementing more signs of high frequency. Also looking at speed. I mean, it's been studied and Bob said it, it needs to warrant that speed, that it can be lowered as well as. The outcome proves that trucks are restricted. Combine those studies together and implement.
It's already, that's perfect. It's already thirty-five now. We're getting below that, and again, we're getting a new structural traffic study, but there are a lot of implications.
Some speeds can fall under what we call statute of nineteen ninety-eight where it beats the criteria of hermit area. Twenty-five. In this area, we have to fulfill the statute criteria that not and. Speed data and there's certain factors involved in the speed data. Especially if there's like this problem to accident records, uh, or accident history, I should say, then that speed can be lowered. Maybe additional five hundred hour increment that was allowed by the law. Those, those are something that we can look at to determine whether or not that speed is lower, usually twenty-five lowers. But twenty-five is usually, but. If, if, if it beats the, the warrants.
And I will say with. Conducted that, um, at times I found out, not that very, one of the challenges we right now currently. Geographically, we have that area that we can see. Set up, um, so without the ability to run any kind of radar, uh, it really limits us on where we can conduct speed. So lowering the speed. Yeah, and, and that, that was something we would look at, not be able to run the site distance. But that's, that's one of the problems with, uh, just in general with speed, is people go too fast. And we're not able to, uh, it comes to many places and it's just the sign, you know, people. So either it's thirty-five or one, there's one five, we're still gonna do it. You know, so we can get out there and try and make more, have more visit on and try and. Definitely get out there, do that.
One thing I do wanna add, you mentioned free and thorough roads, this is a state road. Something for the board to consider, we could always send a letter to Pendo requesting Pendo to look into performing the study. They would do it on their own and results, but a municipality can always send a letter to the department requesting a study be not. If they could, uh, in turn, perform that study. Uh, that's, that's always not preferred of work to also consider since we mentioned earlier.
So, so will they automatically do that or?
They'll look, they'll look at their dad determining whether or not a study was done recently. Depending upon how long time has passed, if the study was done, let's say a couple of years ago, they may choose not to be done. Traffic data probably hasn't increased, but the study hasn't been done for ten, twenty years. Then most likely they would want to, want to pass study. They will go back in their file to determine whether or not. Any speed data or any type of traffic study was done in that segment of that Pendo road. And now, now making determination whether or not to. They will respond back to us and let us know, hey, it may not be done right away, but it will be done over a period of time. About that internally.
That even despite. Sort of the jurisdiction. It's not, we can't just go and report it.
Well, we, we can post, we can post inappropriate or regulatory signs on our roads provided that we have this proper study conducted or proper statutes. The issue would be for enforcement if the police would ticket a motorist for a violation. Uh, from my experience with your district justice, they, they may, or they may ask for a copy of that study. So that the sign was not just posted arbitrarily. Uh, and that will determine whether or not the district justice will impose a fine for that violation. So, you know, we can take it to a certain degree and then once it leaves the police, uh, it goes into the magistrate. At that point, they're gonna, most likely ask for a copy of the study. I have some magistrate, some police departments where they wonder if they want an engineer study at all. On that way. If there's work, they'll have that box there to do.
I thought that. Mount Penn Road. I've got a re-ride. Wrong, it was way over. And, and they take that turn, I don't know how. Not way over. Uh, there's, I mean, I think in a. We're seeing with. Big rings coming on. They were that, I know that's the last time where it was possible. We're seeing big rings coming up. Yeah, right, yeah. So it's not just Mount Penn Road, they're coming out of that way.
So could I, before we do this, can I clarify, so Joe says, those who wish him to ask and to do some of his.
That, that's, I mean, I'm. But we're just asking.
What I, what I can do is prepare a letter, send it to G, send it to Pendo, and then Pendo will be reporting that clause.
Yes.
And that's the third of that, that Joe's gonna do on the call?
Yes, I'll prepare a, a cost for the study for Mount Penn.
Uh, next step is. Uh, please state your name and address.
Six, seven, eight, sure. Okay, but very brief. Please clarify, saying growing up, I got advice from my father. Who, uh, once said to me. And I paraphrase, don't soil breach. As a member, president of the township on the issue that I'm here about. Uh, I have pride, my wife has pride, and he thinks evil. I also got advice from my uncle James Stapp, who was, uh, head of first county bar. And he said, advised me that if you're already getting into a battle. But when figuratively, both, uh, please. I'm needing to respond. About three o'clock this afternoon. My attorney receives from this solicitor, his friend Kelsey. A draft of what we've been waiting for following a meeting upstairs. In November of twenty twenty-three. Everything was sweetness and light at that meeting. It was basically dissolved. I came up with a plan B, save the township a whole lot of money and simplify things. Mr. Johnson shook his head up and down. He said, that'll work. Why do I happily think of this? As a major person, I'm not an engineer. All I can tell you is, this draft. Each draft, it is a draft, I acknowledge it's a draft. I'm giving this friend Kelsey kind of, you know. Having to catch up on this, you're watching, but very special. However. This draft is full of miscreants and exaggeration. And my suggestion to you, you're gonna make representations like this, you need to confirm that they're accurate. And I'm telling you now they're not. And another time, I will tell you why. Little way to there to keep things. Does anyone remember the booth's patty chef? Remember, uh, that night, the judge mail. Uh, during the golf game, a young man was playing with his behalf for a bet that he didn't make. He went, well, we're waiting.
Those, those were long, first few years. Uh, so next up would be ambulance services. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. There, I, I was going to destroy what you wanted. I was just looking at the one that was on the agenda, but not even laughing like. How about, how can you arrive? State your name and address please.
Um, husband and I were on nineteen ninety-nine. And the title being. Yesterday I received a letter in the mail. And, but I found out many people got the same letter to be in state. They'll pay my birthday bill. Um, and they're going to. Thank you very much. Every time if you allow me, so again, the month of the day before. Um, the problem is I didn't just keep going. And I am not wanting to say any kind of. Um, so my first thought was, oh God, I forgot the day of. Then I started thinking. So I went back with my records and I was having a habit of not to log. My husband had, I had two of the here three, our staff was filled with that we had. Um, so I looked again a little further. Um, now that. A pop online of the town. Where here's. One line that says basically, no longer is the rescue spell, it's today in our practice. It is now a very bill. And it was that during five. Um, so I found my. We first that from the. I think this person that I think I've been close with. And then I found newsletters from the town here. And there was a little line in there that's basically again about. And I received four of those a year. So this place finds the mail to the refugees. Never got it. Um, since. It's definitely ten, nineteen ninety-nine, and it's posted that in here that the refugees. Now I saw our past. It's not the tenth nineteen ninety-nine and it's supposed to set in here that the refugees now are past well. Um, now on the top of my head and it's not hard to tell. So this only should be second law, I'm not that automatic to say, oh, I got it. Did you get the bill? This case? And rather than getting a friendly reminder from the township, I got. One selection. Um, and again. I admit, I'm in a big problem for God. So touring, got some things together, I posted online, you know, there's. Um, there's my. Strategy that looks like that, I'm thinking of years. Um, and then some periodic. That's a self-defense. That's important. That's when we were able to name our laws. Um, like wow, that's kind of weird. I know I forget stuff, but I forget stuff. Now, randomly, I called from a couple of people, they tried to. Still, a few of the townsfolk wanted to step in here. And when I walked in, I was. I heard that father, so she was telling him, she was just saying, let me. Hey, well, that that's quite a question. So when I started, so what these ladies, who I knew to have nice conversation with. Um, I asked, I'm like, hey, you know. Here's the thing, and this is kind of regard as. I just made from this thing, other, it's telling me about this thing, whatever. That was telling me to be reminded. And she said, oh, no. And I didn't really say too much, but she got very excited. Um, and I said, well, there's very much things out here that you don't want to set out. Um. And so I have to make this back. You know, that would be pretty late. Yes, you do. And I'm in a box. Hey, the double is so helpful. Well, people do seem to be different using social media. And without going into too much, you know, we don't have a lot of time to debate. Anyway. It can part of blind film. In all of Gordon County. Won't give you the problem, bring something. People reach out, find the meter. They all see that. Who else thought what? Who else thought what? It's love letters. So my husband did. So my question is. Everybody did just get a theater bill.
Well, they all did send out the bill. What's going on? Scratch, you strap in the site. It sounds a bit a little Frenchy.
That year, I think our budget sixty-nine dollars didn't spend. This year went up to three hundred thirty dollars. Living the two percent goal. President. Three hundred thirty-two, three hundred thirty. The center sent me, I had the right answer, like three hundred fifty dollars. Now I have this. These thousand people sold today, they were not there. So I come to the news, don't you pay, people that go. Four hours, that's what I'm spending, which adds three, so it's sixty-three dollars, one president. That's about a dollar a day. And that ten percent fee on top of that, where is that going? Who's popping the ten percent that all those are trying to point? For a rescue job that we have a time to take within our package. So my question is, first of all, isn't it nice if I got a, oh, I'm really sorry, you know, something to say, I don't care, it's a policy. Not, we don't want to talk to you. And. Please, because I don't want to dance better and I don't want to go to school. But. The distance people in our township get the same letter, let's miss or we do state, so. Not like one post, they were the. Bring down the floor. That many communities, this is not a political thing. It is split and integrated. And then Dad did, and it's make all of us pay an extra ten percent from the state that he did not make. By going to score, one sale, twenty percent. And I wasn't paying for it. For men, I'm so sorry, that was not something for that. This is the. They asked for a rate that was safe. This is Dad's investment. And it's probably. I might get. He took on. I'm not gonna say I don't see my bill, but I think it's worth it. I think it's getting paid though. I did get it. That's all I have to say, but on you now. Um, oh, man, what I said, I made mistakes. I admit when I made mistakes. Honest person. I was so upset when I left before you, I had seven percent. Thank you.
Oh, good.
Hi, I'm respectful, you can bring. Uh, Ms. Borba. We sent out. We have six thousand two hundred and ninety-two accounts. We sent out, and we're just paying six thousand three hundred and ninety-two bills. The, the doorbox and other individuals are zoning that we did not send out bill. We believe that we did. Individual, any individual cannot prove a negative that they did not receive a bill. I do not have a copy of every single bill. However, those bills that were undeliverable. Were sent back to the township. So we know there were certain accounts that were undeliverable for various reasons. The home was taken, et cetera. So we sent out, yeah, the original bill, the original bill said that as of July first. All accounts would be sent to collection. We decided that instead of doing that right away, we would give an opportunity for another month. To um, have these accounts paid. Uh, also, there's an ordinance that says the original due date should be March thirty-first, and that was also on the original bill. There were um, a total of eight hundred and thirty-eight of these letters sent out. Four hundred and twenty-three of those are both. Entities or individuals who typically do not pay any of their accounts. And we routinely send them to ARB. The remaining number of new, so to speak, individuals were four hundred and fifty.
Um, I hate. Um. That's my office. And my home charge is what I'm trying to get across. Was that. This many letters being sent out should have indicated a problem. You have so many people that regularly don't get their bill. I can understand that, and I should respect that. But somebody stopped a lot of them. They all get out. And my charge is that if somebody. My bill, but it's clearly being stated. And that's like somebody not that's that that says. You have to pay the rest. And if it was stated on the bill, planned it to do. How am I to know that if I don't have that in writing? If David do not give the town. In the states, not only including the tax bill itself. Someone gave me a yellow stuff, there's twenty-two parts, right? So, which is what we get, or do we go on it? And I get it, we're planning to hear this. We have something that we need to go get lost in, so. Again, I agree with you on that. And I've seen this before. It's something. And that is telling you to everyone who bought this letter, it's not had to go bottom, but. There is a zone and how you respectfully say that it is here, it's hard everybody, it has to test these. For bill, they didn't pay. And for twenty-five years, I did. In the county town, so that it's not going to be that. It's hard to work out.
I understand that.
And I see, and last year, because I got a letter, cleaning it, and I got a bill. This year, they didn't get a letter, and they just get a bill. I thought that was my mind. And then to get a letter that not a lender's saying. Okay, it's been three months, three or.
These are problems. That problem. Yeah, you, oh, no, you're not. I thought so. I'm trying, I'm trying to save my bills to throw. It's good to call you to look today. I'm trying.
Father or. Who is.
Yes.
No, I have a vote. I don't know, we, no, I don't know, we, don't worry about it.
So. There's a couple of questions. What I have on the topic.
I'm buying up, Lord.
No, there's, well, for, for, for uh, for both these and three, but I guess. I think that's my, 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 that's going to be four minutes, they need to announce that. The story. Is that how? Unordinary, I think, like, or is that anomalous, anomalous?
There's no, I mean, there's no length in history, as Mr. Borba bravely stated. Last year was the first year of the year that we used to sell. So I don't really have a long history to tell you. Uh, to give you a follow-up.
So I guess the other, the other important thing that you asked was. Was around.
This, open the line of this, please.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, can we just, so to keep the record clean, can we just have one word, be good at mine, and before you, can you please state your name and address for that? We can keep track of what happened tonight. That's important for me.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, I think it is an important question, like, there's. An answer whether, whether, um. If anything's true or not, but, but to her question about the ten percent. Uh, wait, could you just address what that ten percent? Be, is how it is viewed. I, I don't want there to be any. Reception that's gone through that, 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 so could you just talk about that for me?
The ten percent weight fee is consistent with the previous weight fee, and it's consistent with when it was on the tax bill. And all of the revenue from paying refuse bills, whether it's the base amount, the sensible amount, or a penalty. Goes into the refuse fund to pay for the dumping. And the uh, hauling contract and eagle was not involved in any of the financial aspects. Except for that we have to pay them every month for their services. And uh, also for uh, manning the yardway site and disposal of the yardage. So anything concerning recycling and for refuse or trash. Is all combined into the refuse fund. If an enterprise fund is dedicated to someone to do that.
Something's wrong, potentially, for first. Uh. If it's not, it's not, you know. Fairly all time, same issue. Um, I just don't understand. Even see the amount. You don't pay. We don't miss the, and don't pay our, 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 our price. Eight, nine, or whatever it was. Say whatever the due date was. You. Not, we sit along with any of the news. Tell us. Or if you're gonna do it that way, at least put it. When all the tax books are coming out, if the first book is targeting the trash, that's every time, in case we don't get a bill, those. Bring the boot up, the parent, he's telling them out, and the lady's present. He didn't pay. Don't sleep. Help. There, please. It would be standard to say that. But.
Thank you. Humanities.
People are eight thirty-one skin draw, that was our own eight forty-one game draw. Had fun. Because thirty years, eight thirty-one. And on eight forty-one, it's drawn. On, on, it was a run that people don't usually play in New York. Uh. On top is, I'm not gonna say which, I'm not quite. I'm just doing studies, that's. Change in the. I will do. Then I'll print the fact, and that's. Or say. We've all got.
Refugees, the original refuse bill was sent out anywhere. Okay. Last year was the first year we did it, and it took a while to set up the program. We got, last year was. Five years. There's no way. There's no way to prove unless we start getting certified mail, and then the refuse fee will definitely go up for six thousand two hundred and ninety-two certified mail.
They might help me. That. I found the.
I think you're very good, pretty in my mind. I do, we can be probably. I'm not gonna sit up here and call any, I think, a lot. I'm also not gonna sit up here and disparage. So obviously, everyone makes mistakes, perhaps, of the, perhaps, of the terrorists, perhaps, with some of the rest of it. I don't want to put it here. But I think we can take a little, because that, the time is. While we're married, we probably find ways to do it more effectively. Okay, I need to wrap up some numbers off there on this. The one percentage due to the paper sound.
Well, uh, initially, out of the six thousand nine, uh, two hundred and ninety-two accounts. Um, four hundred and twenty-three were letters to. Uh, refugee offenders, it was, um, uh, and of these, uh. Excuse me, I started six hundred, six thousand nine hundred, two hundred and ninety-two overall accounts. The number of letters that were sent out of last week was eight hundred and thirty-eight. Of that eight hundred and thirty-eight, four hundred and twenty-three were, they're called refugee offenders, um, for political reasons. In those, and four hundred and fifteen, the reason we sent the letters is that four hundred and fifteen were from accounts. That paid it last year. Uh, and we wanted to make sure that those accounts had uh, an opportunity to pay. Uh, so I understand the gentleman's critique when he's saying there should, should have been even another mailing. However, the original bill. And what I know everyone says they never got it, but we did mail them, the original bill. That everyone did not pay with the sensible actions as of July first. So essentially, we were giving everyone an opportunity to represent that.
That's, I do in a math, roughly, that's almost fifteen percent. The guy.
Yeah, and then of the new, the so-called new account, um, that's not going to happen. Without someone.
So one of the things that. Now, the publicity meeting on YouTube. Perhaps this is not as impressive. So. Sending out certified mail is certainly very expensive. And we, even for cost, we have to, but perhaps there's another opportunity here to leverage it from the, to communicate. In a way that everybody can access for free. Uh, I know we have, have their Facebook account, things like that, and so perhaps this is. Something, this is a way we can, that, I'm trying to think about this. The only thing I want to bring up is, because to be totally candid, and I don't want to, for everyone before, but I think an issue here. Uh, is impressive, critically. I understand it sucks to give a, especially a late game, right? I understand it sucks to give a, especially a late game, right, in elections, that you're, but, that's, it happens to me, unfortunately, in the past. Not, but to give, I think that the issue, uh. Maybe, anybody can feel very, uh, disagree with me, but I think part of what's at issue is specifically. Is if we were to waive these, or hypothetically. It would establish a precedent for probably at the rest of, probably these. Have to retroactive, refund previous deeds with interest, things like that. And again, not back to, referring to that, but that, but I think, this is unfortunate, I think needs, needs to be a learning opportunity for the township. I don't know if anyone else has any comments, or, um. Do we have a chat, or, uh, do we, that, uh? And if you, anything that you can help, it's always to be any other way. We don't need to solve it, so I'm going to face it, I'm going to pay it, maybe, uh, further. Uh, kind of funny comment, banking environment, fifteen percent of people to be paid, who would be involved, uh, so that's, that's a big number, and I want to have that product, it's about, about anybody, but. It's just, it's already flat, it's just, it's not a second one. Uh, so we have to have the operation, but anyway, let's just make that way, um. Or, or something, I know there's, that's an issue that we're going to talk about later, because maybe with the stuff like that, maybe there's something.
If you look in the, uh, report that Mrs. Proctor gives us. Zero four zero, refuse collection file. If you look at line thirty-six, forty-three dash one hundred, the revenue current received. We collected one point five three two eighty-four, eight one seven, one and a half billion dollars. People that were billed. Ninety-six percent of the people that were billed ate on top, ninety-six percent. We're talking about four percent that haven't paid the bills, that we collected one point five million, that won't be billed. That is this. Well, that's for this year's current collected, it's one point five billion dollars. I'm not including, but this. They, this report is related, dated Friday, July twelve, but this has, had not July twelve, this is what we have.
And some of that involves, not every account is a single account, for instance, we have a number of accounts that have multiple units. So it's not one point five million divided by three hundred and thirty, and that's. That there are.
Oh, boss, they do look at that, all the fact, all for, I mean, funny that God bill. You know, it's all, it was all paddled, or combination, or all. But we got ninety-six percent collected out of a hundred percent that still, that's how I would.
But hundred percent that was, um, the weekend. That, that's exactly the reason we sent the letters, they're exactly who.
Just for the sake of the report, they all speak of this. We, I, I, I don't, I apologize enough, I don't want to.
That someone, but there may have been a mistake somewhere, if this many people, these are letters sent out, this many more people than the regular, thirteen or fourteen, um, that's what my, that's my concern was. If this many people had to get a letter stating you forgot to pay your bill. They, there was a problem, they, they didn't get out, they didn't put it in the mail, and they didn't get the bill. And they just can't return to you, it's the same, you can't track that. But I can say that there's many, it's always representative on lying about not getting the bill. I'm not, but that's how I'm making it, I feel like you're saying, well, I gotta, we still, we still, and we're not going to pay my bill. Now I have to pay that ten percent, once I do it, I'm not going to be fine, because that will cost a lot of extra revenue, that ten percent that all will have to be counted. That was, and it already had six dollars of land here. I don't need, dating is, this is never a bill we had in the numbers, it's part of our process. This is second year, and soon, something happens, there is a pandemic, a lot of people, they didn't get their bill, and it's bad. You're hearing from a lot of us now, this is smaller than the people, there are a lot more people out there, and they have to stay quiet. So, something about this. How about, sorry, to happen, and, 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 and.
My Larry Moore, five five nine, church road, and same problem, this is a township from nineteen seventy-two. Never had a late bill anywhere for this township. Now, either the bookkeeping here is lousy, maybe better hire a new book, because I see something like this, that's why I had it. And money's not coming in, why you check in for it? Not wait three months, check in, good, and then power the people that, you know, supposedly didn't pay, but like I said, if you don't get a bill, you don't pay. That's the way I look at it. I mean, if I go to the store and they don't give me a bill, I'll walk out. It's just common sense, more than anything. So that's all I have, I, I, I just, I'm awful. Don Snyder, thirty-five, high reality. My question is, if I pay my bill and I don't pay the ten percent, what happens?
Full payment, you expect it. And how.
I know, I know, I know, that's what it says, if I pay my bill, pay three hundred and seventy dollars, what happens?
You can send the check back to you, and we have done with, with every one else, these words around the letters, and after the whole thing.
So if I send it in less that, get it by August first, you send my check back to my client's collection?
Yes, and we set up now, yes.
If I don't pay it, by August first, cool. Just clearing it up, because there aren't fans for that important. But I agree with my explanation. We probably should do the right thing to everybody who's got a letter. Not charge it under ten percent, because there's ten twenty people, there are probably five hundred or more. That's still one of the right things for residents of this township who elect to lose your position. So, so I.
So you need the address, please.
Obviously, it's not a new guarantee, it's, uh, a, 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 which, which, we know, dollars and ten, how much it was collected, as of Friday. You know the letters that don't have, you know, four hundred and, you saw on a number of people got letters that most people don't. You know, four hundred songs on golf, that haven't been supported, I cannot believe. This letter waited. Four months, for it to come out, before somebody, and when you were punching numbers, before they said, wow, don't get it wrong here. This is not a conspiracy to get you out of thirty dollars a refund. This is. Citizens that are caught or paying their bill, and then getting crap, it's easy, because somebody didn't do their job. And maybe they didn't send their checks, maybe you're shitting with that post office, and, like, maybe it's, if you're so concerned about the post office. Not delivering them, maybe the next form, maybe. It, it's your responsibility to check up on what happened. But I think this letter and the, there's a bunch of, of, of. Don't have been paid, as of today, and unlike, it could happen, unlike her, I would not necessarily describe a lovely lady in college as speaking. My wife didn't encounter the same one, she, she was a miserable woman. And considering it's your estate, I think an apology is due.
I'll just, 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 I'd like to, that, that. Using random numbers. Something like eight hundred. Households. Are people, like, some of them, like, a lot of them, like, half of those, or, well, before, so-called, repeat offenders. But, great, that's, we, we mentioned, something else, great team, that household, and I guess, we're wondering, and I, I know. Rescue skill is something that we don't really have a historical analog for, but is, is thirteen percent. Where the legacy, regular, or other smokes that still, we would send out?
The only other comparable bill is the tour bill, and as I said, four hundred and twenty-three of these eight hundred and thirty-eight accounts were individuals. Who never gave a tour bill, or, uh, don't pay other money to, and town, who, who, and things like that. Uh, so, uh, the number of accounts that were, or the percentage of accounts that were unusual in town, that could have.
Unusual, not that, right, so I mean, I don't know. I certainly don't blame that. Your, but it does sound, there, there, maybe there's a, in, in, state somewhere, do you think there's, there's reason to be upset? I mentioned this earlier, uh, but, there are enough, if I'm not a weird, uh, that, the precedent that could be established. Perhaps, help me, if you could, sign in on, on that.
Well, I mean, there's no mechanism here to establish what actually occurred with the bill being sent out, we would see. So if you would decide to waive, for example, the ten percent fee, you're setting a precedent where people to say, well, I don't know. And how, how does anyone believe that? Um, so, I, I agree, it sets that precedent, and there's no real way to deal with that, even if you have people sign out David. Who can say that they're not, I don't know, I'm not saying that about him, but from a legal perspective, it, it really muddies things.
Let me go again.
You, you can, certainly could, and a lot of times, to try to prevent, from setting up, but the, the act itself is.
Yeah, you can say, you're trying to, but you can qualify, you're trying to prevent this happening, right, convincing enough. And, and making an effort to rectify whatever was, for the one side. Because it's a theory, question, it's.
So, the, the gentleman asked if we could put qualifiers on any potential waiver of the hundred percent. And the answer is, certainly, that's what people would, would want to do, they put, put a qualifier on it and say, based on anomaly, or. What looked like an anomaly, um, the board could decide to do that and qualify it, which, you know, would. It, it would decrease the, the value of the precedent that's set, but it would still be a precedent that's set, so if. And I'm not, you guys aren't conspiracy theorists, and you're not computers, but, okay, then, a group of forty other people catch on to that, and they say, well, let's all get together and say, we don't got our bill, it's. So it just, it, there's all kinds of ways that it sets that, 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 that long.
I thought, I, I agree, my thoughts were.
So, human logist, my cash box, eight oh seven, township, township. Um, I did, I did receive a, but, to my fault, I, I forgot to pay it. So I understand. About the way you need to pay, I paid it, it paid me. The problem with me exists last year, when I originally got the first bill. And I couldn't understand why this was, for all these years, it was in my taxes. And now, all of a sudden, I get a bill for whatever it was last year, and I was, for lack of a better term, E.O. Um, and I got no satisfaction either, and I work here, so I wasn't happy, but it is the way it is. Um, this should have never been changed last year to begin with. It should have stayed exactly the way it was, and we wouldn't be having this hour-long discussion at the township meeting in July of twenty twenty-four, thank you.
I mean, I, I have meant. This could, if people hear that, not.
For postcard. To answer Mr. Nell's, uh, question, the tax collector is a licensed official, and the township is the first class. And the tax collector, um, essentially demanded that he separate the revenue bill and any other fees from the taxes. And that's why we came to them.
If it's like, if you, if you need to jump out. Would have some, obligation, uh. Because it would have said, no, we're not doing.
I mean, I was, I, I think that was before my final story, so I'm not sure what, make that, that, that. The best that I can answer is technically, it was protest, there would have been some difficulty. Uh, personnel-wise, and, uh, separating finances. Uh, there would have been, essentially, the tax collector was not being compensated for work that she was doing. So in some way, the tax collector would have to be compensated, and that is not in the, what is allowed on the first-line account.
That is, so, and, 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 and. Kind of, while he was, this was, she was accepting, you know, the way it was, and now. The bill was changed, so you're telling me that Son has done that work, and you're, not, for free?
She was aware of it, and she exempted that, yeah. We're going to have to move on, we can't, we, I'm sorry, Howard. We will, we'll discuss this further.
Look, I. For, for everyone's sake, I apologize if any of, I mean. There are a lot of, this, this is something you can learn from, or take this back, try to, be right away.
Before I leave, I would like to say, whenever a public speaker opens up, I'd also like to say, how well we set a precedent that when. Presidents of your country, people. You're them, and you're willing to solve a problem, there's an issue, and, private, that, that, the police, please, and, 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 and. Maybe honestly, instead of getting far to, to, to save that, somebody else made, but, somebody seems, somewhere, something, something, my, my. So not to hail those bills, um, and I get my super bill four times a year, but that does not get lost. The fact that there's many people filled up this, why? He could set a precedent and say, for those of you who paid.
Increased development in the township. One was in the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen era economic development committee jointly with Schillington. Schillington pulled out of that committee and that did not result in anything. And there have been various changes to the planning ordinances, including zoning ordinance, as many people in this town are familiar with, in efforts to increase development in the township, both to increase the real estate assessment base and also to increase the number of jobs. At the same time, the Friday report then around two thousand six, when the two twenty two South Highway was built, as everyone who's been local for a while knows, the state took the bowling alley and various other businesses around it, and we lost one of the jobs. Some of that has been compensated for by the East Point Business Center where the currently right now are out there. But since that time, there's been a very stagnant growth in terms of both real estate assessments and jobs. And last year, all municipalities and borough counties took a hit on the assessment and were reduced as well because the common level ratio went up and numerous, numerous property owners re had their properties re assessed and we lost enough value to, and we had enough further property to go exempt that we actually lost a million dollars of assessed value. So it's actually gone down. And I know that the board is very concerned with this, this aspect. The answer is, I don't think there's a matter of bullets, but I know the board is concerned with this issue and I've been raising this issue for quite a while.
Yeah, just wait, further press that. As you mentioned, you see, what I would call here is, I mean, the landowner's taking a lot of emphasis, but diminishing. For the project, right, that taking a big part of, meaning larger, uh, that of, of that concern. Uh, but further exacerbating the issues that is left in. Twenty-six percent of the equation. The cost is going up. This is a very good problem, and Jean said something, um, for the areas about, um, that we definitely need to address. Certainly do not want to be raised into the practice of, of, of the project.
The last thing that quickly it's just my observation to a community day, uh, since it has moved from last year to this year. Uh, but I think some of the problems that's all actually still there, especially the parting of the water rush that seems on. Coming in, part of watching the end of that. Part of waiting at stocks, on the corner, which was very dangerous if they were saying. See, they're trying to pull out. And I did see more trash on the ground around there. The last, the thing they're leaving, but then this doesn't sound great for the reason why. Because last year, uh, the township was fighting for the trash, and they do go broke their job over that fourth of July holiday and we didn't get gas. And they got fined for that. So, uh, it's gotten better, but when that happened, all the neighborhoods had their trash bins out on the sidewalk or. Put the trash guns finally wiped out. So people coming to meetings, actually it's something like. They were putting the, the trash cans as they're going around, so I saw less. This year, not so much, I saw a lot of trash screens on the guards and, uh, I just, you know, it's just, it's kind of this hard, and I know they did throw in screens a bit later, and I don't know, um, anyone knows, there were a lot of years that went around, there were big lots, you know, just standing, if you think that, I'm not sure. Somebody mentioned that, but I don't know if that, that's true. But I know they did have a screen. Uh, I think, uh, the police did a great job this year though. Uh, and they did things down, and we thought about this stuff. Uh, probably, probably helped with the meeting, but, uh, yeah, the trash thing was still kind of nice. See that, people did get some work in, some work in place, so, you know, that is not bad. Okay, first thing, but the problem. So let me know, what, oh, one neighbor, uh, even on, that's on fire, they actually were pulling trash. On, perhaps you hear, say, except that, take a trash.
Hey, so we are officially, um, always on. Okay, back to the end of the service.
We need more than our, our, uh, if you talk, off road and all vacations. Uh, everybody should have got the. We had a total of nine hundred and four, nine hundred and one calls, pretty hard here today, but six thousand, seven hundred and four. Uh, of those nine hundred and four, one hundred eighty-two were within township, for anybody here today, and we have one thousand, three hundred eighty-four. Uh, as a call, an average response, um, eight minutes, etc.
Thank you so much for raising everything. The minutes, I have a note here, not to approve them.
No, um, if the board would like to approve the public hearing minutes, we can do so. I would like to withhold the regular meeting minutes, not only with respect to a couple of typos, but there's actually a motion that he, he inserted, um, that did not, somehow did not get in the final copy. He said, I got, I can read, read, he, he needs regular meeting minutes and that can be adopted as a meeting on your line, sir.
Is that in the motion?
Who would need a motion to adopt the minutes when the public here?
So, I would say.
Mr. Bill Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Greg Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Badore.
Yes.
Mr. Zunell.
Yes.
Mr. Brown. At your places, there are some legal files, copies, what we would like the board to do. This is a report we believe we understood by Mr. Greg Miller, wondered what we'd like the board to do, to pay a look at it, and if that is really what we want.
That's great, yeah.
I'm pretty much, you might see rolling on, here, they, they, the revenues are on class on the general fund basis, they, uh, I only think that they even need for that, so a lot of projects on the fund there. So, if they incorporate that, uh, well, if you exclude that, it's a bit of a, a bit of a. The reports that I was able to set, I mean, a matter of about fifteen seconds, so.
And, and the first line is where you can see that effectively the use, if that, the ways are, uh, effective, yeah.
Yeah, it's just that, uh, effectively, uh, three hundred-ish thousand, just give them around numbers, five or about, you know, two thousand, probably.
Sorry, this is from my, uh. It's the point, the reason where I go.
So, if you look, uh, first page is the general fund. So, under total operating revenues on the top, you can see it's top points, the gross tips off of last year. But that's, that's just kind of our, our real, we're sure. It's flat, but so you can't, no, no worry about the rest of that. A vision, the second city, goes to the top. Yeah, we can go to the top where it's a total misplanning of revenues there. Uh, look at the column specifically, assets of thirty point four, fifty point three, six zero, compared to. When you look at the ball numbers, it's, it looks like it's worth about twelve. Like, it, it looked like we're sixteen, or one point three surrounding versus sixty. But the thing to recognize in there is, uh, three one investment, a mother fund, fifteen hundred and eighty thousand dollars, that's awful money. That's a one time, or an extraordinary, or a grand, well, you factor that out, it's probably a great argument, so if you take that all, over the, you know, south side, on the road, or flash, or three thousand.
That's pretty much on.
Okay, next, I want to talk about this, um, plus the board, while we did, uh, I think it was during, uh, we, uh, tomorrow, the county. And I've been, one of your statements, that brought nineteen fifty-five, I have continued as president, as the. Thank you very much.
Uh, I don't take any.
Okay.
Those departments and courts. One thing I wanted to point out on the reports that Mr. Greg Miller has requested, and on the revenue side, you will see for building permits, there's a significant deduction from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, and that has to do with the budget storage development initiatives in building permits in June of twenty twenty-three, and that is reflected through the channel number, and we have had no significant developments like that in this year yet. Hopefully that's yet, not ever. But I just wanted to swing that out because I'm looking at the summary. In regard to item D, Restoring Hope. This is the Restoring Hope Foundation assists families and individuals who need some assistance with, you know, its renovation of homes. They have, they collect a home every year. The home they have collected this year is seventy-eighteenth Road for a handicap visit, for an individual to leave that home. They are requesting that the county's waive permit fees for that project. This was, we've had one other Restoring Hope project on Bel Air Avenue a number of years ago. The county also gave me a case in that case. However, we cannot waive the state surcharge within four dollars of the set that we must evade the state. So Restoring Hope on their behalf, I am requesting that the board authorize waiving permit fees for the handicap visit of seventy-eightheenth Road would be separate from the state's.
I make a motion second.
Mr. Denial?
Yes.
Mr. Gohan?
Yes.
Mr. Greg Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Badcor?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is budget store unlocked. The development that I just mentioned a few moments ago, submitted, they have an escrow for their improvements. They have submitted an escrow release. And just today, we received the engineering review. We are requesting that the board commissioners authorize the release of their escrow subject to the exact amount being determined by the county's planning and review.
But before we move on that, I want to say still one of the laterals to this event. So how are we going to get that corrected? So we don't have problems down there with.
The staff met with the developer on Friday to discuss that issue, and their, Mr. Nichols identified a way that they can fix that and bypass that problem.
Can we hold mine, the whole line was corrected? Make sure that it's completed?
There is retaining.
Not, not with that program?
No, it, unfortunately, the sewage lateral and water lateral work was not escrowed, but there is still contingency to contain on, on the overall escrow.
All means that you're going to think it's better.
I'm sorry.
Is there anything upon?
That is, we imagine that. You mentioned that the escrow did not cover the lateral, but what's being used in speed by best estimation?
Yeah, what they, if Bobson described more specifically what they're doing, it gets, I'll try not to get into the weeds. There are two sewer mains behind the, the old two guys. One of the sewer mains is private. The other sewer main is our public sewer main. The one that they blocked up that Mr. Miller is referring to is the private sewer main, and it was worked out between Mr. Nichols and the developer how they can bypass the man that was blocked up to still tap into our public sewer main. And the leverage, yeah, the money, they're real leverages. If they don't have working bathrooms, they can be shut down because of the codes that are involved. So they are highly motivated to fix that. Was there a second? One second. Thank you. Mr. Billon?
Yes.
Mr. Greg Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Badcor?
Yes.
Mr. Denial?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Thank you. The next items I have is that the top of page three, records management. We are asking for a resolution to dispose of certain records. We follow the county's historical and judicial commission manual on disposal of records. There is a list on your tablet. A lot of them are records such as invoices from many years ago and deposit slips from many years ago. That sort of things. If you have any questions about on the list, I can assist you. At, at the time, I found a couple of documents that I forwarded to Mr. Badcor from when he and his father both donated money for the county's two hundred and fiftieth anniversary celebration in nineteen eighty-seven. So that was kind of fun. So I'm requesting that the board commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing the disposal of the records of.
I would not have convinced that. It's physical and electronic records.
These are all physical. But if, if needed, when we get to that point, it can cover electronic records of that.
Well, yeah, that's. Add that in. That's what you discover if the public connects the record.
Well, of the records that are being exposed, electronic and the five, these are all actually physical boxes with records.
It's part of, or like, you know, at first, that kind of regular thing. Things like the G drive, you know, that stuff on there.
The G drive is up to the board. If you want to retain that old stuff, that's fine. That, that is really, that's the board's G drive. So if you identify things, and the G drive is complicated. You can always get rid of new. The question is, are you getting rid of an only original record? And can are you allowed to get because it's only original? What was the other one?
Emails.
Emails. Emails, there are rules with emails, and I would refer to it as listed on email. I don't know off the top of my head. I would have to consider a lot of different rules and type of types of records. So I mean, I can look into that.
I mean, it should be something to go comprehensive with if you're going to.
With respect to emails, it has been unfortunate cases. For instance, I think back in oh eight, one of my computers crashed, and a number of emails were lost. That cannot be helped, but emails are definitely public records, and they're subject to rights to know. In this case, records we're talking about are invoices, bank statements, deposits, with all four years that have been audited, drawn and filed. And there's room involved. We're kind of beginning to begin those things from years ago.
I think that that motion needs to be. For example, it would like. Maybe you've been on that. I'll say.
Mr. Greg Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Badcor, do you hear? Mr. Denial?
Yes.
Mr. Billon?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm. It seems a little bit like that. Well, I guess first question, we have, I know we have office, the tablet on there is on. Overlapping. I'm just looking at.
It's really up to the court. And then we originally started using the G drive from that point. It was convenient. And again, none of the records on the G drives are original or only. They are all used because they don't get uploaded to that until we already have it. So deleting the G drive entirely, the biggest thing is we would have to make sure everybody's on the same team. Their access to the drive, or whatever mechanism it requires.
Is that where it comes from?
No, it is from either the server or somebody's. Oh, sorry. Is the board commissioners ready to discuss Brad's collection of flying hills now or at different times? What I'm, I'm still looking for similar to the last meeting is what mechanism, administrative mechanism, which I'm not asking to discuss that issue in detail at this meeting. What I'm asking for is how do you wish to request that? Do you want a committee? Do you want a commissioner liaison to be assigned for that? I'm asking for the administrative mechanism, not for getting the review.
Yes, we need a committee. You'd be on the committee along with Andrew and Brad. And the representative.
Yeah, respectfully, I normally see administration. It's all responsibility of the. We are overseeing. We are directing, not administering. So I don't think that is the responsibility of the board commissioners. However, I do agree with the committee on the movement of this problem.
What we're talking about in the, in the rise of the EAC, which is, well, an environmental provider committee, which covered more than trash, it is something that's a lot in my opinion. We've gotten around a little bit to find which is worth our view. That maybe we will be, would effectively, oh, maybe January. It would have a liaison from the board off that. But, well, pretty short, on which will be better than a little bit one. So maybe they can send that a little bit more back, but that would be. It will be a great place to send it, trash and water. That's if you can hold on pretty much. Essentially, the conversation is about. And therefore, I think, off the top of my head, it's. Like, would it pass or not? And it's specified. Correct, it would be specified as it's the EAC. You don't want to consider anything environmental with it. On my own, but that's, that's. But I think you got a little bit more, we need to help you work that. We got, we got, I don't know, candidate for ordinances from around the county, and available to take achievements by law. A lot of the, the questions about unit health. You know, I just allow it to come together. And then it needs to be, uh, legalized or we could use or whatever the right word is. But we develop ordinance. Something I don't think is wrong, right? And we probably do that in committee.
I don't understand how environmental committee is going to figure out how to collect trash on their fuel drive in townhouses that somehow wants to push the trash. I don't know how environmental studies can address the issue. But it's common, so one wastes time. Well, with the committee, it's not a resolution for this. How that, where the bottom line is, twenty twenty-six, we're not out of problems wanting to collect.
Well, I think we need to agree there's a problem. It sounds like you had a problem, but when you just proposed administration, you didn't volunteer for it. So I think, I hear you saying no, but.
You live in Flying Hills.
Yeah.
You've seen, you've seen Dan, Greg lives in Flying Hills. Dave often lives in Flying Hills, but he lives in a park. So if he doesn't have a problem with trash, it could be on. I don't care if it's a regional committee, but you have to be careful because of the sunshine law. So I figured you and Greg would be a great avenue to work with Flying Hills, and we'd have to have Dean on there with you to work through this. But if you want to come up with environmental committees, I don't know how they can address this, but that's up to you. If you get free yes votes, we can make it to that.
They're not wanting to. So it's administrative bodies, one note that the red one is on the issue. They're reaching out to Polinsky. Who was effectively studying their ass and the company's book and everything. And then they'll come back with recommendations thinking Polinsky is one of the problems. And then they'll come back, back that day and say, yeah, Renee, it sounded like you're not doing it. The committee has just been over thirty-five.
The difference between in this committee or that committee ability. Your front, so administrator, the, the compass is something that has to come together. And it's just who is even in, they want to be only that. I don't think the board's role is to be administrator.
Probably works.
Good evening, a quick update on the Montegoal Smaller Project. It is ninety-nine percent complete. They will complete the political lines on Thursday with the committee. And we will have a pending payment agreement or payment smoothing. They just finished paving yesterday, paving patching yesterday afternoon. They thought it was in the sign. But we're pretty happy before that record is working. It tested out nice, it's going well, it's moving on. I M P is in very sewer replacement project. From Fort Cedar Top Road, it's in progress along. Well, come up the hill, the sanitary, well, that's going to be back. Some waters and other plants. Shores involved down there, you want to be prepared on their part. Both the complicated projects, which in fact, that is one of that. Flying Drive is Sweden. It was contained, I believe, when we received an act. What is made tonight? And that would give some of that process back. I believe that may be the best thing there are. And see, some time ago, a year ago, sixteen oh one Ridge Avenue, widened their driveway, they did not move correctly. It's not pressing curve. They put a large wedge of blacktop. The height of the curb is about eighteen, about twelve, fifteen, about in the roadway. This is an issue for so long. You can catch a full slide here. Code has tried unsuccessfully a few times to get the homeowners to correct this problem. So far, they have seen, and what we're seeing is permission for public to down there. And this pop off with blacktop. And then that's the roadway, the roadway. So we don't have to worry about any of the. For the winter end, possibly during the selection. What we do is grow happens to be involved. So I'm looking for a group or a community that makes sense. This question that. Does the homeowners offer any ration or like, your dues? They just did, and we have this from time to time. It just come out a few things, and we can't be everywhere all the time. It's like the police department, and we came upon one day and it's. I think it's one of ten to the five. So we asked a little, we talked and if, but three times. I think we did this, right? It's not, it's not good to throw us a bottle out, and then it would be a second bottle.
Mr. Billon?
Yes.
Mr. Greg Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Badcor?
Yes.
Mr. Denial?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's all I have, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Who belongs? The engineer, Joseph Ruffeste. And everybody.
Just an update on the Hunter's Road Phase One project. Borrowers Construction sent out letters to the residents back when June twenty-sixth, where start date July tenth. Preconstruction meeting was held with the county staff and myself. Borrowers Construction on July third. Construction started on July tenth. Began with the excavation or removal of these specific pavement. And they began stabilizing subgrade in a process of removing unsuitable subgrade. And we installed some underdrain to prevent spring flow down to the counter during destruction. So things are progressing well. So far, the amount of soft areas seems to be less than what we anticipate. Our fingers crossed that. Too bad that we experienced one already road. And we anticipate installing more underdrain closer towards the low area where the existing Pines Avenue, parents ground, we're a trade number for subgrade. We anticipate having also an application for payment by first one, four, or five, thirteen. They also submitted their. Just the deadline. Hopefully, the building point, we probably, you know. By the engine, completion of the work. However, these rains, supposedly will get down. So sort of the subgrade does dry out. Second item, update on the Cedar Top Road slope failure report. We did receive, we did receive a report for the geoprendal here. In the process of reviewing the report and reviewing the the recommendations for stabilizing that area, the twelve hundred blocks near Top Row. There are areas where there is some slope failure. Do you have some alternatives that the geoprendal engineers recommending? How we need the staff to review those options and prepare some construction costs as well as some design costs, and look at our options that will best address the issue. And I will have that information ready. For shopping. For the board to review and proceed. Anybody have any questions?
Next solicitor.
Thank you. Item A, Fonders Solder, is a recurring topic that's been on the agenda for ten months now. This is with respect to a proposed zoning ordinance, that amendment. And if the board would recollect, the original was tough and focused on three items to potentially be amended, but end up really focusing on six. And also because of the process, that procedure that's required to amend zoning ordinance. So it's better to try to do a conference of amendment than to E T O and then have to continuously go through zoning ordinance and normal. Here in those things like that. So two amendments were previously authorized by the board. Those were regulations regarding wind turbines. And the second amendment was defining retreat centers and including permitted locations of regulations for those. And the other three proposed amendments that the board wanted to address included amending the permitted uses in the mixed use general commercial district, increasing the fire access width. We expanded from twenty-four feet to twenty-six feet. And inclusion of aggravation on which. And inclusion of Airbnb like ten or short term. So I thought we could start with the one. I did find examples of aggravation with the language and Airbnb language from several other municipalities. I did send them to Gene for review, and I think we're still in the process of reviewing those, trying to figure out, and it's obvious if he won't sit with the council. So stay tuned for proposals on that. Right now, we don't have. And then the fire access lane width, I'm not sure. I, I don't remember from the last meeting if the board did authorize that to be drafted into the ordinance on my, or those forms of that. There wasn't a, this motion about fire treatment, questioning that the board to that, because we've been people with fires. So if, if the board, once they put out a list of things that have already been authorized, I can do that, we will have to have further discussion on that. I would see how that. All right, and then the last item would be the change of permitted uses within the M U D C district. And the proposal was to renew warehouse uses, freight terminal uses, and wholesale and distributing uses as used by right within that district from township. And if you recall, those uses by right were added by amendments. The zoning ordinance. Planning Commission did look at this and issued a memo in May recommending that there be further discussion due to the fact that this district has abuses in instances where intended were not being developed. My recommendation was at the last meeting, the board wanted to enable that discussion on the back. The board's.
I'll regret the changes for the M U D C. I will not approve it. I will make a motion to not. Second.
Mr. Greg Miller? Mr. Badcor?
Yes.
Mr. Denial?
Yes.
Mr. Billon?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Okay, so based on that happening, it looks like we just need to nail down language for aggravation and Airbnb uses, and then we can submit to the board a comprehensive amendment for everyone to review. And then what's acceptable is that there will be lots of advertising to the product. A regularly writing up. That's to make that happen. All right, item B, the Larda ordinance. The, at the last meeting, the board had authorized a requirement of ordinance amending the township to Larda ordinances, and the proposal was to improve language that played the flag on the station on any path there that they granted an exception under Larda substantially completely. And at this point, the board has a chance to review the draft, and the order was advertised on July seventh, one from four. So I would need a motion to the NAC to be ordered to have.
Badcor?
Oh.
Mr. Denial?
Yes.
Mr. Billon?
Yes.
Mr. Greg Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item C is Hill Circle Properties Repository Sale. Consider authorizing consent to accept. My understanding, though, there are two properties that are on the county's tax pay year of repository sale list, and this just means that those two properties were not sold at the bureau's upset sale or their judicial sale. Any property that were these sold after the judicial sale is placed on repository sale list. And the, the law requires written consent from all packings of those properties. If the sale is successful, a property is. If the sale is successful, the property is made to purchase their brand here of packaging. And I'm not sure about any. We're having to talk, you know.
There are, there is no tour, no order, no collective. These are two vacant properties up in the street. Northwestern section of Barview. Frankly, we don't have to, you know, not to do anything on these two little snippets of property. This isn't a very difficult area. If it, if one looks at it from Google Maps. It's, oh, that's one. He breaks for the house horn. Unfortunately, Google Maps does not talk to you about the slope. And there's no way to look at the profile of these properties on Google Maps. And the only way to get to these properties is through someone else's driveway. So I do believe this is going to be very difficult for whoever the purchaser is to develop. And so far as the township is concerned, I have no concerns about. Nobody wants to spend money on that one. I recommend they go in and do so. Yeah, I know she was there to say. Mr. Badger.
Yeah.
Mrs. Denon. Mr. Bellmiller.
No.
Mr. Greg Miller. Ms. Brown. Thank you.
All right, item D is with respect to seven fifteen Philadelphia Avenue. At the last meeting, the board commissioners authorized me to file a complaint in the Berks County Court of Commerce against the property owner. What's called a judgment relief to have the building on that property demolished. There was items have been filed. They're already scheduled next Wednesday at one P M. And the township did obtain an expert report from a structural engineer. Who's going to testify at that hearing with those that the court does come to the demolition of that property. And hopefully the court will agree with my proposal for the bargaining of bidding requirements. That the township can do it quickly and fast. To get a one five fifty thousand. And also, it's not the idea of getting a motion. I just want to perform the board's perspective.
And when I. If you were to drive by that area, you can see the wall of that unit exposed. Because seven seventeen has been the model. And that property owner, seven seventeen, does not really deal. But it is pretty startling to see the damage that seven seventeen. Yeah, it's been used by. And I don't know if the commissioners were sent the expert report. I can forward that to everybody if you'd be ecstatic, because there are a lot of photographs attached to there. Thank you. Home and built. One second. Mr. Denon.
Yes.
Mr. Greg Miller. Sorry, Mr. Bill Miller.
Yeah.
Mr. Badger. Yes, Ms. Brown. Yes. I'm sorry for that. I don't want to. Correspondent. If we get an audit report, a copy of the audit report of the Lord of Land Street. It is now in the county service building on the corner. Please let us know if you have any questions in the court right here, some comments, please. So we have any.
Hey, no, this is the executive. I have my. I'll be able to step back. Father. And that is. There's not a lot made of the fact that Greg Miller and I both live in flying hotels. And. The point that there's been insinuations that we would not represent the county in the good faith as a whole. And over represent that interest to the public. And so the reason I bring that up, and I should add that more and more people in this room names up this. Not going to take fingers, but. Well, I don't think that's fair characterization. I also don't think. It's fair. And it feels like they can eat a soup time separation where we're asked to not over represent that interest to fly. But at the same time, we're not being asked to be the sole representative of the board on an issue in applying to the community that affects the township that far that. The reference issue is not applying to those. It is an issue that is it not, if it's not correct, will have a substantial impact on the practices of all residents. So if the township wants to find those. Members of the board to be their only representatives on this issue that affects everyone, then let that be known. But I don't think it's fair to, I'm not saying that you said this, but I wanted to point out the fact that these insinuations have been that we are not acting in good faith. I want to say. That we're the only representative of the board. The ones communicating with community applying help. I think that would create. An apparent of just those insinuations. We want to really look at this in a hard light. Normally, this is going to be an issue. Quite frankly, we have public works with our. We can gain each other's bar. The fun thing, I mean, I'm just pointing out that the contact. I think that's.
I'm pointing out.
Right, I think that's, that's what I'm living through is the situation regarding what you were. And you're probably totally on that. That's what you're on.
I.
You're on it. And now you want to be trying to pull out of this. No, that's not all. If you like that conversation, we can. Five months ago, I'm still waiting for that conversation. Mr. Greg. You'd like to see. You still do the orders, please. You said I.
Sir. Sure, there is.
You did, yes. So don't give me that load of crap.
I don't know what load of crap you're talking about.
You know exactly what I'm talking about. Five months now that we need, wait for your conversation with me about this warehouse situation. And you get to pull me aside and ask me about it. And I fucking hear it too. You left. I see it outside, but so you left. And you'll get to have that conversation that you said you would love to have. It'll be the first time I'm sitting.
I would love that. Yeah, I think you're misrepresenting.
Representing.
Sir.
Sir.
Order, please, please take it down a notch. You're not being, you're being disrespectful.
No, you're being disrespectful by telling me I don't know what the hell I'm talking about. And I don't know what the hell did you tell me. I'm still waiting for the conversation you said you were going to have.
That is without the word of all. You got set on stuff. But and I think that's something I'll. Last meeting, but. Or I'd say next. Next. It's only going to know what's happening.
Is the same that we're here to monitor and he keeps throwing out your mouth. You just read every month. Wait till you shoot him.
Okay. Let's, yeah, let's.
Okay, we're running a little on Tuesday.
I still wouldn't be happy to have a conversation. You know.
You're still waiting.
Your, was your one.
Can't speak as loud as you put on a mic. Good thing. I've been waiting here for five months for a good thing conversation. You have to come talk to me about anything. Yeah, put your hat on and go to your executive session. Mister. It's like. I will. I will need. He was. My gosh.
It will get better than this, doesn't it, Bobby? Okay.
Okay, I can say session. Jean, do you want to give a brief of what happened in executive session?
I defer to the solicitor. And we did just hold an executive session to discuss a matter of real estate involving Sixth Avenue H R Road. A matter concerning the police collective bargaining agreement. And a personnel, personnel issue related to a fire department candidate. And I do believe there is a motion that the board wanted to consider to hire an additional candidate to the fire department. And suspend probation or period through the end of the candidate's military leave.
Yeah, I'll. I'll make the motion. Also.
Mr. Bill Miller.
Yeah.
Mr. Greg Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Badger.
Yes.
Mr. Denon.
Yes.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Thank you, board. Appreciate it.
Okay, on to reminders. Really.
Quick, sorry to interrupt. We're going back to the. Motion that was never completed earlier. Regarding to the. One-time qualified waiver of. Of the, was it refuse lately? I believe I made that motion. One-time waiver qualified as. Good. Only those who have not been. Delinquent in bill payments in the past. For. This period, I guess. Did I, I don't remember the exact wording I used last time, but Adam.
I believe you associated it only with those in this mailing from July eleventh who has not previously been doing.
How does that affect the people that already paid the fee? I don't understand this. Because my daughter was one of them. She had the bills that are stacked. She missed it. She paid late. Does she get her money back since you paid it? And what about what Peg said about all the others? And how do we have records? Of all these people? This is, this is going to be a very complicated issue to do. I understand what you're trying to do. And I might say it's a hundred percent wrong. But this is going to be very hard to administer. That's my opinion, and I'm not administrator of paying the bills and.
Yes, well, that's, that's terrifying. I guess. In regard to folks like your daughter. What would the impact be? If we. Had anyone ever taken the mask? Rescinded the late fee for this year's refuse payment. Cross the word. I mean, because you asked about fairness. And I mean, it's a legitimate question. I just want to understand like what we're talking about there.
If you allow us to look into it and hold it maybe to your next meeting. And we can give you a better. About, you know.
Better parameters as to what this could look like instead of because you have people that have paid on time. And what do they get? And everyone else who's paid late now gets what you were. So I think, I think Peggy had a good point. Maybe let administration look into how you could qualify this in a more reasonable manner based on whatever anomaly you think occurred. I, in my, from a legal perspective, I think that's a better route to go. Thank you.
Makes sense.
Thank you.
And maybe.
I don't know if there was an.
Same.
I'm sorry, Andy. I was just going to say, and this is too much work, regardless. But if we could only make comparison versus what this looks like versus the sewer bills versus any other bills that were sent out. Like, is it, is fifteen percent common? Like, do we run into?
Oh, I want to tell you, that's why, that's why. If you look at the delinquent amount in sewer, it is horrendous. It's over a half a million dollars. There's a lot of people that don't pay. That's why our rates have to go up because we have to cover that group that never pays.
That's what I was sort of trying to, maybe it didn't articulate that. I was trying to ask earlier in the meeting if. If, I understand there's six percent or whatever that just never pay anything. But is that additional? Seven percent or whatever, is that an unusual amount for bills in general?
Well, and the other thing, I'm not sure. I would have to check that out. Jean and I would look at it. The other thing you have to remember, as bills start going up, just like in sewer. As you start putting those rates up. You're going to find, you're going to end up usually with more delinquent accounts. It's inevitable. Even the people who generally pay on time oftentimes start falling behind because everything's going up for them, not just that. So they pick and choose. So maybe, oh, okay, today I paid my, I'll pay my electric bill. But I'm gonna not pay my sewer bill. I'll put that off for two or three weeks or two or three months. Because they know we can't shut it off. We're going to end up with the same issue I'm concerned with refuse because you can't stop it. That's the whole thing in a nutshell here. The two things that you are in control of, the sewer and the refuse, you cannot stop those. You're going to give everyone those services generally if they pay or if they don't. That's why I'm asking, if we just look, I can give you some, you know, maybe some numbers for the thirtieth. And then you can maybe have a better idea of what we're actually looking at here. And we'll go back from April first because April first is when it was the link went already.
Can I, can I ask a question? I'm just a dumb cop, baby.
No.
How many mailings were sent out? You say like what?
Six thousand.
We have six thousand two hundred and ninety-two pounds. Eight hundred and thirty-nine letters were sent July eleventh. Of those, four hundred and fifteen of those were ones who had paid last year.
That's it.
The balance were accounts who are eventually non-paid.
So that's, that's a lot, obviously, a lot of postage that was sent out. And I know there's a machine that confuses me. I don't know how to work it. That puts the postage on it. Can you audit that and show that the township did what we're saying that we did?
Yes, there are ways of proving that at least we sent it out. What the individuals and the audience were saying is that they didn't receive them. There's no way one can prove.
Right, so either way, what we can do though is prove that the township sent it out. So I think that the stance that I would have if I was a board member, not to overspeak my authority, would be. Something happened. Don't know what happened, but we know the administration did their job. So unfortunately, that's just. It's, it's the luck of the draw. Shit happens. One of my friends. You know, I don't think, I think you're crawling down a rabbit hole and you start talking about refunding money because that's going to cost you more money because how are you going to get that money to these people? Whether it's going to be a written check, I can tell you. Commissioner Rouse is probably going to have a sword hand from signing those checks, but.
She was saying something about not charging as much for like the next year, like taking thirty bucks off.
I respectfully would recommend not doing that. Our fiscal year, our budget year ends December thirty-first. And if we start getting into credits on accounts. That does not, we're a modified cash basis of accounting. You start getting into shades of accrual accounting. And that has implications for the audit. And my recommendation is if the board ultimately authorizes refunds of late fees, then we just write a check.
You know, I guess.
Okay, with Peg's approach, I mean, I thought so much.
I think, I think so, a hundred percent. I think that makes sense. One of the, like, was that a yes, that we can audit the postage machine?
I believe we can, yes.
If that's the case, I mean, I didn't do that. If we can, like you said, confirm that we did our.
As long as we did prove we do want to be safe.
Yeah.
We should, fine. Because if anybody wants to commit an argument at that point, just let.
Right, take it up. Then we can say, take it up.
Yeah, they're not going to believe a sentence like that. There could have been, that could have been another. Yes, exactly. That's what they're going to say.
We should know you printed and you put postage on it.
Right.
We have proof.
I think it's just the number of stamps, right? It doesn't, it doesn't say what kind of letter it went on or who it went to. So, I mean, it's sort of.
It's showing, hey, so much, so much postage.
It will tell you the number of pieces and of course the amount of money.
To Peg's point, though, I don't know what it gets you at the end of the day. Maybe it makes us feel good, but I don't know what we're going to do about it.
Oh, it's going to be awful. The overtime is going to be horrendous.
Tell where the disconnect.
Horrendous.
Right, but it's.
So you don't have disconnect in the future. Because nobody wants to sit through that meeting again.
No, I.
You want to know this. Reminders?
He is the same mailman I do.
Are we on reminders yet?
It sounds like this is something that brings to the next.
Just one thing, the guy on Harry Avenue has the same mailman I do. I got mine. Why didn't he get his? Did his neighbors pay on either side of him? If his neighbors paid and he didn't, they obviously got their bill and he probably did too. And that's what I'm wondering about all these people. I mean, did everybody, their next door neighbors pay? It doesn't make sense what they're saying. They displaced it. They didn't realize what it was and they threw it away.
Right, but regardless of their stories, the bottom line is this, you know, we have to come with senses. And I just make sure that we've shown them that we've done everything we can do diligence to get.
Running that money sets a bad precedent because they're not going to just stop asking for it here. And there's one other thing I need to inform the board while I have the microphone and I'll shut up. I'm still the alternate for the Berks E I T committee. I need to not be the alternate anymore because I'm no longer on the board. They're still sending me emails. And Maria Cantor and whoever is the lone representative who represents everybody, she needs a replacement in case she can't make that meeting. So would you be pleased? Greg, if you wanted to do that because it's numbers. But it shouldn't be me and I need to be taken off their. How often do they have meetings that you need to attend or? I only go when Maria can't go. I'm like the alternate. So I still get the emails about the, with the minutes and all the, you know, money that's being distributed. I still get all that. I don't look at them anymore, but that will come to me too as the alternate. So Maria or I. She probably, does she know that I'm not on the board anymore? Or, you know, that she needs, she needs an alternate in case she can't go. So I just don't want to let the board know that it shouldn't be me anymore. Does it have to be an elected official from the Governor Mifflin School District? I don't know. What is Maria Timoney? I actually don't know. Yeah, we'll, we'll have to look into this.
It's still a test, but the senior, it's a senior member of one year. Let's get this show moving.
The board does not have to make a decision on this issue tonight. I'm going to have to refresh my own memory about this committee. Yeah, it's not on the agenda either, so.
Doesn't it end up to rescind its first motion?
So if it's not seconded, then.
If it's not seconded, it dies or you can withdraw it.
Okay.
Let's just withdraw. We can revisit this. I think.
Okay, on to reminders. Zoning hearing board, 7/23/24 at 6:00 P. M. Application number 818. Application number 819. Board of Commissioners meetings for July and August 2024 is 7/30/24 at 7:00 P. M. It's a Tuesday meeting in August 20, 2024 at 7:00 P. M. A regular meeting. Planning Commission, August 5, 2024 at 6:00 P. M. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion to adjourn.
Have a second.